Yeah, I'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock. I'll ask the clerk if anyone is participating electronically.
I guess we have councillor LeVey on tonight.
Next is adoption of the agenda. Well, the motion that's moved by councillor Levite, seconded by councillor Ross. Be resolved that the meeting agenda dated Monday, December eighth, twenty twenty five, be adopted as amended to add an information report under section nine, which is information report nine point eight titled Visit Street Pump Station. You asked for a vote, councillor Begalow?
Yes.
Yes, and I'll ask the rest of the table, all in favor, carry.
Just a quick question, sorry, was Clara, like, the extrication talk supposed to be on this agenda? A report from the chief or something like that?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
From the last meeting, my recollection is that we were gonna contact them and try and establish some communication and get back to council, whatever happens in those, in those that talk.
Sounds great, thank you.
Well, three point one, it's down for, anybody have any topic of interest to declare? None here, councillor Begel?
No, thank you.
Thank you, presentations and delegations, there are none. And the adoption of the minutes as circulated for the regular meeting on November twenty fourth and the community service committee meeting of June second, twenty twenty five, and the corporate services committee meeting of July seventh, twenty twenty five. If everyone had a chance to do those, I need a mover in the secondary. So moved by councillor Gardner, seconded by councillor Tiver. Be resolved that council adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of November twenty four, twenty twenty five as circulated. And further that, due to council passing a bylaw to dissolve the standing committees of council at the regular meeting of November twenty four, twenty twenty five, the June second, twenty twenty five minutes of the community services committee and the July seven, twenty twenty five minutes of the corporate services committee also be adopted as circulated. Questions, comments? Okay, I'm gonna call for a vote, councillor Begel?
Yes.
And all in favor, carry. Okay, notice the motions. Scrolling down, which is the second. Correspondence. Eight point one, Ministry Municipal Affairs and Housing, Protecting Terror by Building Faster and Smarter Act, twenty twenty five. Questions, comments? But in anytime you'd like, councillor Begel.
Will do, thank you.
Okay, nothing there, so eight point two, various municipalities, removal of the HSD on new homes purchased.
I think we should, I think we should support that. I think we're gonna have a lot of new homes in the next few years. You know, hopefully, a lot of locals will be buying new homes. You know, the HSD on some homes, it's what do you expect? No, twenty-five thousand. I'm talking about a home two hundred and fifty thousand or, you know, three hundred thousand. So, yeah, I think we should support this.
Okay, any other comments? Everybody okay to have that come back at our first meeting in twenty twenty six?
Yes.
Okay, please say. Eight point three, North Bay Perry Sound District Health Unit Board Meeting Agendas. Questions? Comments, none. Eight point four, Enbridge Gas Incorporated Utility Earnings in Good Position of Deferral, Notice of Application. Any comments? None. Eight point five, Ministry of the Environment, Conservation and Parks, Invitation to Regional Engagement Session, December eleventh, twenty twenty five. Questions, comments? Just scrolling down, councillor Gardner?
Is anybody from Madawal participating in this?
I'm just scrolling down because I don't remember where it was.
The regional engagement session for the consolidation of conservation.
Okay, that's the one. I'm aware that the CEO has contacted our rep to make him aware of it, so. That has been done. These are, councillor Mick?
Oh, okay.
Did you want to add anything? Oh?
No, no, I just know that he also knows what he's needed to wear, so that's.
Okay. Eight point six, Ministry Solicitor General Update to Ontario Regulation four sixteen dash twenty-three, old and affirmations under the Community Safety policing act, twenty nineteen. Any questions, comments? Did they make you swear under that, Lord?
Not yet, we have, no, no, we have not done that yet, we, there's a few things we have to do, we have to take some mandatory training. There are a few other things that we have not had to do this yet.
The amendment was effective at the end of October, so it's recent. Okay. Eight point seven, Bonham, Northern Ontario, Hildays in Ottawa. Questions, comments? None. Eight point eight, Town of East Willimbury, Opposition to Protect Ontario by Nleasing our Economic Act, twenty twenty five. Any questions, comments there? None? And that is it, so let's move to thin two. Information reports. The first one, nine point one. Report number twenty-five dash seventy-four R. It's dated December eighth, twenty twenty five, and it's titled Updates from Town Hall Prepared by Our CEO Treasurer, Paul.
Thank you. Just starting off with the capital work, the Dorian Road project is basically done. Yeah, the roadwork is done, last bit was through the Lake Brothers, which is curb, I don't know if any of you have been up there, but they're joining Dorian, Belange. It's not fully done, ahead of budget, ahead of schedule, and so with a little bit of money that was left over, we were able to, one culvert left between the Dorian work and Nord's work, and we were able to put that culvert in all within the same dollars, so used up all those funds, and that's, that work's all done. And it's just the illumination contract, that's the last part. And they're just got an update today that the supplier hasn't set the parts in yet, but as soon as that's in, then the lights will go on, the rest of it, we got the MTO permit, which is the last part, and we'll get that done. That part of Dorian will be finished, the ISE, the north and the north. So, yeah, that's been around since two thousand and nineteen, that file is dated. Terms of the Main Street Connecting Link, we did submit the application for three point nine million dollars. As you know, the town share now is seven hundred and forty-five, and then we expect to hear back from the province in early part of March, so that's not a lot of that cost. In terms of landfill, since two thousand and sixteen, the last time the Ministry of Environment did an audit, we were there last Friday, and we took the last Friday, and went in, did whatever it is they do, took some samples, a dashboard around, and so we're gonna make some recommendation, which they're, you know, what I would call minor administrative matters, like in our sign when you come into the Zen Bill, we have hours and numbers to call, but we also have to have what we take, don't take listed there. So those kind of administrative matters, so we'll take care of all that. More important is the sampling on the, you know, the test, we also will hear what they have to say about that, so. So stay tuned, there'll be some more. We did post for the Public Works Supervisor position, which we hope to have bring in the fall and then New Year, so this is the budget, as the current Public Works Supervisors sort of ended the payroll this month. In terms of celebrating, you know, during the Christmas period, we're looking to have a staff gathering here in council chambers on Thursday, December the eighteenth, at two thirty. And we'll bring the staff in and share some refreshments with them, and exchange some gift cards for staff, and so on. And of course, what we call five-year month, for those that have been here, it's five-year, we'll get a five-year month, and we'll do that on the eighteenth. The little update on our retired Public Works Supervisor, so with our director here, we're gonna be just want something very simple, so the public works staff are gonna take him out for breakfast on Thursday. We'll give him his gear, he's retiring, he has to do that then. And we will, he'll come in on the eighteenth and say goodbye to everybody, that he wants a download case, so that's what I'm gonna have. For in terms for the office, we'll close at noon on Christmas Eve, and then for the week of Christmas and New Year, as in the past, we'll shut down and come back on Monday, January fifth. I've shared before that, from the Parks and Rec, that they would declare January Hockey Month in Ottawa. On the seventeenth of January is our alumni game. I, you wanna throw out some names, some of the players are there, is that a secret? Oh, no secret, Brian Scruggan, Sergio Mameso, Colton Mark, who else?
Knuckles.
Hey?
Knuckles.
Yeah, Brittany Nichols, Knuckles, yeah, Brittany Nichols, right, Knuckles, Brittany Nichols, yeah. So, so pretty impressive names, Rick Five, for those of you fans out there.
I already bought my tickets last week.
Good for you.
Five in a.
So, very nice.
Forty bucks each.
Yeah, the best forty bucks you're gonna spend.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's that, and then, you know, half, you know, four, five days later, it's the Ted Nolan Inspirational Talk coming to Madawal. And that's also the event you want on your calendar, and that is pretty special to have you to come here.
Is that part of the indigenous group together with the town on this year, or just the town only?
There's, there's various people that have been cooperated into that, it's not including indigenous group, but it's not just, it's everybody out there in the hockey world.
I'm talking about sharing this guy's costs.
Yeah, yeah, so it's been, it's been all costs to the general.
Awesome.
Yeah. And then, a few weeks ago, sort of the Parks and Rec team, you know, with Dex and Sherry, you know, sort of, there's a hockey tournament that was planned, and then it was the last thing that seemed not gonna happen, and so staff got together, made sure it did happen, and it was well received, and we made a bit of money in the process, just around fifty-seven hundred dollars, so. So, just kind of make sure a good thing sort of kept on happening, and then just follow the trajectory. At Public Works, the Grader that we bought a couple of years ago, it got a new facelift, I just thought that the put a little picture in there, shows.
Looks brand new.
It looks brand new, doesn't it, councillor?
Does.
Yeah, I think it looks great, and so you'll see out there on the Boo Boo Park, on the two thousand and seventeen Great Lakes Love Truck, we had to put in the news transmission, and that cost us ten thousand dollars to get that done. Would have been trouble that, but we used our own staff, and Mr. Grady came in and did, we got to work on that, so we were able to save some monies, which is great.
On that grader operation, how many guys are certified to drive it?
Well, we had one who was on leave, and right now we have another, so you and I can't go drive that.
No, no, I would this morning, at least, you know, always have a couple of people.
Yeah, 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 correct. The visit lease station, there's an addition to the agenda tonight, so I won't get in, there's an update on that, I had said there'd be a report to come, I just didn't know that the information would come today, hence the last minute addition to the agenda. And just around the fire department, just so that you know, that the revenues for that department has now exceeded budget by over thirty thousand dollars in different, some of them are highway calls, but some of them were accessing available funding. So that's how they've been able to pay for the improvements at their fire hall, which have been way, way behind, and woefully, you know, sort of the washroom in there, I don't know if you had a chance.
Yes, I was there today.
Doesn't it look good?
Yeah, even though hot water tankless, which is free.
Yeah.
They got us nothing.
Well, it's a rental, right?
Yeah, wow, I'm just saying, it's pretty good.
And so that's a good thing, and then at Town Hall, we adjusted the budget to do some, a little bit of a facelift, and that is creating office space for the director, and also for Sabrina's office, we'll get it closed again, so now it's kind of a bullpen scenario, it's not ideal. So, so we will start doing that work, and only in the evening and weekends, so it's not disturbing the staff or the residents that come. So that's, that's the update. Questions, comments?
Any questions for Paul?
Very good, very good, councillor Gardner?
Yeah, just quickly, a few things to add, the hockey tournament, so just the fifty-seven hundred dollars of profit, that was good, it was three ways. Somebody from the public, somebody from FJ McGallagher, and then the town, but that also included, it was about three thousand dollars rent to the over two towns, or eventually for the, for the ice, so they, that's on top of paying for the ice. We would have lost out on that chunk of ice for the weekend, so it's a good thing to keep going. The Hockey Month in Canada as well, I think that doing minor hockey and, and the department, it sounds like there might be some more stuff coming, so keep your eyes peeled for that. Gonna be a busy month. And the only other one that I had. That must be it, the other one slipped in my mind, oh, the landfill, sorry, the landfill. I was up there a few weeks ago, it looks great night and day compared to what it did. I mean, as nice as a landfill can look, but it looks great, and it's, it's a really good job up there, so nice to see. I hope that they were happy to see it, and I'm glad that they came now and not this time last year.
As far as landfills, the director, the director, this team has done a lot of work in making it the way it is, and it's something that the, this family could be proud of, it's a grand up there. It doesn't look like a landfill, it looks like a big yard, happens to have a landfill in it, as opposed to having garbage thrown everywhere for that, so.
Being in the, yeah, straight note, that's good.
If I may add, just to that, from an inspection and client, compliance perspective, their focus wasn't necessarily even on the cleanliness of the landfill, it was more around the record keeping of the landfill. So we're working with that problem, and we're really fast to make sure that we're.
That's for Ross.
I know that a lot of community members have commented on how great the landfill is looking, and it's better organized and things are much better, I've had a lot of comments on it.
Nice.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Yep.
Okay, so I need a mover in the secondary. It moved by councillor Ross, seconded by councillor Levite, being resolved that council of the town of Madawal receives report number twenty-five dash seventy-four R, titled Updates from Town Hall. Questions, comments? Councillor Begel, your vote?
Yes.
Okay, and here, all in favor? Carry. The next report was titled Library Proposal, report number twenty-five dash seventy-five R. It was prepared by councillor Lauren Mick. I, I had a chance to talk to the table before the meeting started, so I was probably gonna get blindsided by this country, Mick. But I'm, I'm gonna ask that we defer this to our next meeting, if it's okay with this table to do so. I'm willing to move the resolution, if someone wants to second it, okay? If you don't mind, after we can have a talk, we can explain. So moved by councillor, moved by Mayor Belange, seconded by councillor Levite. Be resolved that council defer report number nine point two, library proposal to the next regular meeting of council. Okay, questions, comments? None? Councillor Levite is asking for a reported vote. Last chance, questions, comments, none?
Yes.
Mayor Belange?
Yes.
Councillor Begel?
Uh, no.
Councillor Joubert?
Yes.
Councillor Min?
No.
Councillor Ross?
Yes.
Next report, nine point three on your agenda, it's Madawal Voyager Days twenty twenty-six, report number twenty-five dash seventy-six R. Report prepared by CEO Treasurer, Paul.
Thank you, this is real brief, this one, just to since council opted to go with Voyager Days for twenty twenty-six, that would be nice to have a budget to work with, and so budget was prepared. We did scale it down this year, if you remember, it was five hundred thousand dollars last year. So this year, we've gone through and looked at where the numbers come in, I think the big difference is is that we keyed down the attendance to twenty-five, that seems to be the new number. And so why, why budget that we're gonna make three thousand or thirty-five hundred people coming? Because they haven't come for the last two, three years, so at twenty-five hundred dollars, the twenty-five hundred attendees, then the number of four hundred and sixty thousand works real well, and that's our cost, and so we, I could see conservatively, we would break even at four hundred and sixty, but not at five hundred, so that's why we're asking for the budget to be approved at four hundred and sixty thousand.
Any questions, comments? For Paul, councillor Mick?
Just like a bit of a side comment, the the River Fest in Alora, which is very comparable to Voyager Days, announced that they're no longer running as well, so just something to keep in mind, that we might be able to poach a little bit of that crowd, they're very, very similar festivals, so just, I thought I'd put that out.
That's one in Westnip?
To Alora, down closer as well, but the one in Westnip, that happens on the same weekend, that'd be a nice thing to address as well at some point, but this one was a little.
That's the one you're talking about.
Yes.
Thanks for going. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so need a mover in the secondary. But a motion is moved by councillor Mick, seconded by councillor Levite. Be resolved that council of the town of Madawal received report number twenty-five dash seventy-six R, titled Madawal Voyager Days twenty twenty-six. And further that council approves the twenty twenty-six Madawal Voyager Days Festival budget in the amount of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Okay, final chance for questions and comments.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, councillor.
Can I ask through to the, or to the CEO, to the mayor?
Certainly.
And then we fix our little problem there about the passes using the telephone and.
The technicality?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we will have either a fix for that, which we know what to do, or a different system altogether, so we haven't decided on which one yet, because we will, we'll be able to resolve.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so councillor Levite requested it.
Yes, please.
Councillor Mick?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
No.
Councillor Cox?
Yes. No.
Councillor Begel?
Yes.
Mick Plonkin?
Yes.
Motion is carried for the report of five days and two days.
Okay, nine point four, nine point four on the agenda, report number twenty-five dash seventy-seven R, titled Amendment for Parking Bylaw Number zero seven dash seventeen, prepared by my law enforcement officer, Conway.
So back on November twenty-fifth, the letter was sent to Madawal all by the executive director of the Nipsey Perry Sound District Catholic School Board, and the Nipsey Perry Sound District, regarding the loading of that building, that's a little bit I don't know everybody's word, but they used to come in off John Street, and send it in the parking lot, so. Sure, they're a little concerned with the seat, because the maker is there, so a little concerned with the seat, you know, the young kids absolutely want to move it to their bar road, and I believe the road is wide there for that reason, which I don't know what made for that.
But they used to.
It's perfect for that, so there's a little spot, I don't know if you can see on the map.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's gonna be, you know, it's, it's, it's gonna be that, from there to there, because they wanna load, there's a gate right there, the students get off, come up, move in there. So they asked if we had a bylaw, we don't have, we had a bylaw there, thirteen dash sixteen, I believe, but that was for the temporary build. Let's do how loading is not what we call a school, but that only lasts a year, that, that, in the field, so. They're asking for a new bylaw, and that's what we have on the, that's why I've attached, sure, the bylaw just gave you know, that, when I have a mayor there, it will be lawful for the signs, and, and it will paint in that recess paint, who was loading the whole way fine, or whatever we have to do, but, but, so we can do all that.
Any questions for Mr. Champion, councillor Levite? Any questions for Mr. Champion, councillor Devine?
Not a question, but it used to be there, like you said, when they built the school. And it worked well, and the gate was right there. They were, they didn't have to come out from the back of the bus or walk around onto the road. Went straight in, they were very well supervised.
Another role like that, if your school was dedicated school, but they don't have to put the arm out, stop, or invite the traffic, it can still continue through older.
It's a, a non, a non-loading zone, that's what it's kind of.
Any other questions for Mr. Champion? Then they need a mover in a second there. Moved by councillor Gardner, seconded by councillor Mick, be resolved that council of the town of Madawa receives report number twenty five dash seventy seven R titled amendment to parking bylaw number zero seven dash seventeen. And further that council approves the amendment, the parking bylaw number oh seven dash seventeen, which is placed on this agenda for final approving and passing. Final chance for comments, questions, none, I'll call for a vote. Councillor Begolo?
Yes, thank you.
Is everybody at the table, all in favor? Carrie. And nine point five on your agenda. Report number twenty five dash seventy eight R, prepared by our bylaw enforcement officer, titled amendment to Clean Yards Bylaw number twenty one dash twelve. Wayne?
Well, back in August, I had a discussion with our lawyers, and everything asked to review our Clean Yard bylaw, get their opinion of it. And they were they were in an opinion, they loved it. And but there was just one thing that I was reviewing in recitals section that I forgot that section four or five, which is black, which which states it's, it just says that municipalities, the contribution of bylaw passed in the municipal act of security against poverty may make an order requiring a version of the meeting of bylaw or cause or permitted from the owner or acquired the land, if the contribution occurred to the work correct contract. So that's what I'm bringing this this amendment forward for is it's just another strong, strong piece of the bylaw.
Beats up our bylaw and you're taking something out of the municipal act. Okay, yeah. Well done, yeah. Any questions for Mr. Champion? Councillor Devine?
That's not a question, I'm just wanted to let you know that he's doing an awesome job. Things are getting done now, cleaning, and our streets start to look good, except for one spot left to do. You know what? When, when you do these things and people cleans our yard, your value of your properties and everything else in the area increases. You know, and you don't, and that one in the corner that you did a good job on, when you got transits coming through our town, that's the first thing to hit. It's terrible. So we gotta look, we gotta do awesome cleaning up, which you are doing now, so keep up the good work.
You you made ones that are
Yes, I know.
On the agenda and one is a lawyer, the other part is lawyers and two. That'll be, it'll be reported, you'll vote that one, I don't know when, but we'll get, we'll get reported on.
Thank you. Councillor Tiber, I saw you with your hand up. Councillor Tiber, would you have your hand up?
No.
Oh, okay, I thought I saw your hand up. Okay, so no other questions, and I'll ask for a mover in a second there. Was looking on this side this time. So moved by councillor Levite, seconded by councillor Ross. Being resolved that council of the town of Madawa receives report number twenty five dash seventy eight R. Title amendment to Clean Yards Bylaw number twenty one dash twelve. And further that council approves the amendment to Clean Yards bylaw number twenty one dash twelve, which is placed on this agenda for final approval and passing. Question, comments? Councillor Begolo, your vote?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, everybody in favor? Carrie. Nine point six, report number twenty five dash seventy nine R. Prepared by bylaw enforcement officer. Title the men no smoking and or vaping or tobacco, of tobacco, sorry, and cannabis in public places and workplaces by bylaw number twenty two dash twenty two. Wayne?
Back on, back on June twenty seven, twenty twenty two, that's when the bylaw was passed. You know, with the most smoking or vaping in public places or workplaces, which would be public places. All municipal buildings that public are allowed to workplaces, work trucks, and blue work trucks, all of our work everywhere, public works, arenas, and a lot of that falls on smoking and hair also. But this, this amendment is due because of our building over a little month, getting, receiving a few complaints about the the local smoking. There's five entrance ways, e- e- entrance and exit ways. So and under, I looked at the bylaw. Only the entrance way, the main entrance was under the bylaw. So that's why I bring this forward to amend it and include all five entrances and connections, because I had no, no leg to stand on if there's somebody smoking within a meter of the other end. But but do any, so that's what they're all about tonight is just to get all the entries included. And under the, under the bylaw, so if, you know, to give that they prove that people are, in pictures, like I, I, I'm gonna meet with Polly and then try and have a meeting. The old, old renters there, just go through everybody, just to give an idea what, you know, they could they will be charged if if there's evidence what for. Because it's hard, it's hard to charge somebody on a complaint, nobody wants to step up and sign a complaint form, so I so this, at least this way, I can, I can make sure that every entry is covered, but there's now, I've got people on my side that are gonna, I'll start taking pictures and which which is what I'm not going to afford to put out a strong evidence, because I've seen the JP before and he's laughed at you. So anyways, that's what this is for, just to add the other four, four entrances and exits onto the, so as you see it scheduled out. All doorways and entrances. And then the reason three fifty made three ton areas is because he, when, when the bylaw had come out, he would let it first to all the businesses and wanted to be on the, on, on the schedule, schedules are about nine meter entranceway thing and then this, the owner of three fifty was the only one, he was out and brought at the start, at the front of his building.
Okay.
He had, he had an employee who went out there smoking there all the time. Because they would have moved to the sidewalk, they would have gone, all right, can't, can't get out of the sidewalk. That's why, that's why three fifty made you. So if we decide, ever decide to sell our suites, then it's up to the other, the new owner to, if they want to still buy with this, or if they want to get taken off, they just write a letter and say, you want to be
Also, yes.
I think in one of the reports that we received from DEFCON two, they addressed that. They sent some notices out to the residents because it is, it is happening quite frequently. I live directly across, so you can see where they're going, and it's very close to people's windows and yeah. So it is getting to be a little bit more than it used to be.
The white line is, like I said, to meet with the Polly and
Yes.
Explain and then forward with it.
Any other question, councillor Devine?
Yeah, I was there today and I got surrounded by five of them in there, but the lady that takes care of the and maintaining the hallways and that, and that they had, they're all complaining, there's some people are smoking in their apartment, some, and the seating room. They had some people already smoked in there the other day, so they couldn't even go and sit in there to drive themselves have opposition. So who's gonna monitor this? I, is that you're gonna go periodically, go to the building to see?
Well, there's nothing I can do about smoking in your apartments. Okay, that's their remnant, that's their home. And if I did, if, if, let's say you just, for example, somebody was smoking, I'd have to get, ask their permission, say you'd like to buy law. If I have, I have to ask your permission to enter your home, if they smoke. But you, for that, you have, yeah, you have no control over that, but corridors, hallways, all anywhere the public go, yeah, they cannot, like, the sitting area, they cannot.
But you won't go unless you get a complaint, right? Okay, alrighty.
Any other questions, councillor Gardner?
I would just ask that, I guess we're gonna have this meeting, so that might be okay, but if we're not gonna have that meeting, then at least this be circulated to them by, by paper or something like that, to all their doors. So that they're all aware of, you know, what the set fines are if they're caught, so that they know that we're serious about it now today. Yeah.
Move her in a second there. Moved by councillor Mick, seconded by councillor Tiber, be resolved that council of the town of Madawa receives report number twenty five dash seventy nine R titled amend no smoking and or vaping of tobacco and cannabis in public places and workplaces bylaw number twenty two dash twenty two. And further that council approves the amendment to the no smoking and or vaping of tobacco and cannabis in public places and workplaces by, by law number twenty two dash twenty two, which is placed on this agenda for final approval and passing.
Reported.
Reported vote requested by councillor Devine. Final chance for questions or comments? None?
Yes.
Councillor Min?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Councillor Ross?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion is carried with the reported vote of sixty eight and one name.
Nine point seven on the agenda, report number twenty five dash eighty R. Titled recycling in the town of Madawa, prepared by the director of community services, Dex.
The mission needs to be like a version two point O attached to this one, because I've shared a piece of details before, but felt maybe one last report was needed with some details in regards to what's happening across the entire province of Ontario. So even the city of Toronto is going through this exact change as we speak. As of October first, twenty twenty five, the town of Madawa is no longer responsible for their residential recycling. When people call here, we redirect them to GFL, circularmaterials.ca forward slash Madawa, which presents the GFL phone number and email address. We take no complaints on residential recycling. We do, however, have some involvement with the non-eligible business and commercial recycling. As well, we have the the depot for residents at the landfill. So the recycling depot, the landfill is open to residents Saturdays from nine into noon. Missed a pickup, have extra materials that don't fit in the bin at the curbside. It goes to the bin at the landfill, that gets picked up once a month. And and that's covered under the residential recycling program. Maybe every once in a while, something commercial subs into that bin, because we're trying to avoid it getting in the landfill site. Business commercial recycling, the only involvement the town of Ottawa has currently until January one is that the town of Ottawa has a non-eligible agreement signed with GFL that allows for those on the non-eligible list to get the recycling picked up weekly at a cost. Now, we have had businesses and commercial entities in the community asked to be removed from that non-eligible list because a weekly recycling pickup doesn't work for them. So they've been removed from the list and they've been allowed to find a recycling contractor for picking up and processing that they choose. Some have gone with a local contractor, some have gone with a contractor from even Toronto, as far as Toronto, so there's there's a mix happening, but as of January first, all business and commercial are responsible for removing their recycling from their properties to the storage facility. Something we'll be paying attention to on the other side of the new year, which is in the fairground. So I think I've given you the details, didn't read the report, financial consideration. Again, town of Madawa no longer responsible, however, we do have sites, the town of Madawa has sites. One sixty Water Street, four oh one Fine Street, four eleven Fine Street, four fifty Herman, twelve seventy six Mills Green, those sites generate recycling, so we have to have a recycling picked up at those sites. So we will have to pay for our own recycling costs in, in the new year, because we are considered a business. Yeah, this should address all of your concerns. If it doesn't, you've got the link to circular materials matter, or you can reach out and call us.
Any questions, councillor Devine?
The private contractors for the businesses pick up their recycling. Anybody ever approached the town to have a bin set up at the landfill site, are they gonna pick it up themselves? Or do you have to come and pick up at their own business residence?
So you're, you're asking if the businesses can bring their recycling to the landfill?
Yeah, but to the contractor that's picking up for them, and they put a bin there.
That hasn't been explored, I can tell you that.
Okay.
Definitely something that might be of interest to businesses. I could see the town having some involvement, maybe that conversation, if that's an option, but everyone would have to get their recycling to that to that allocation. Remember back a long time ago, we had those blue recycling
Yes.
Recycling of Madawa started, everybody, the variety store.
Exactly.
And that's, that's where recycling in Madawa started, right? So here we are again.
One more time.
Alright.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mover in a second there. Moved by councillor Mick, seconded by councillor Gardner, be resolved that council of the town of Madawa receives report number twenty five dash eighty R. Titled recycling in the town of Madawa. Last chance for questions or comments? Councillor Begolo, your vote?
Yes.
All in favor? Carrie? It's nine point seven, so the new one. Nine point eight. Did you, did you send an update? Sorry about that. Nine point eight. Well, everybody was sent an update and we voted to add it to our, to our agenda at the start. So nine point eight on your, on your updated agenda. Report number twenty five dash eighty one R. Title Bissett Street Pump Station, update number two, prepared by our CEO Treasurer, Paul.
Thank you. It's not a long report, I'm just walking through it, so if you have the chance to see it, it's only came out today. But you do know that at Bissett Street, the pump station, it's a, or the lift station. This is a painful subject for us this year, because it's custous, council's already approved. Uh, this is a painful subject for us this year, because it's cost us, council's already approved. About a month ago, the replacement of one of the eighty horsepower pump, uh, cost of almost a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh. The other pump, because there's two pumps, uh, was rebuilt from. The parts over there, creating an operating pump. Uh, while the, we were waiting for the new one to come, the new one still hasn't arrived, we still got the rental. And uh, which the cost is gonna get uh, absorbed by the seller, if you guys remember that.
Yeah.
Uh, but now this other one, the rebuilt one, it's died. Yeah, oh, that's a big goal. So we, I said, uh, you know, last time, and then in my report of the town of updates, that we'd asked for it to be. Rebuilt as opposed to buying a new one, and what the costs were, and this morning I got. The assessment to rebuild the pump, because you can't repair it, because there's no parts for it, it's it's over, it's back to nineteen forty-five days. So uh, they have to rebuild it, as if they're making a new one from scratch, and it's ninety-nine thousand six hundred nine to rebuild it.
What's your new one?
Ninety-two thousand one hundred seventy-two, ran it out the shop, thank you, sir. So, and it will take two months to order it, at eighty-five hundred dollars a month for the rental. And again, Zion said, if you buy the pump, we'll forego the rental, so I have to be a. It's a no-brainer, but it's an expensive no-brainer, again, uh, and it will be in next year's budget, but. It's not a question whether we like to or we don't like to, uh, we don't have a choice, and we need to pump. This is what pumps everything to the go, so it's the most critical lift station asset we have in town. They have to have functional pumps, they have one on the way, now we have to order it all.
Second to mention, it's the, the original nineteen ninety-two installs pumps.
That part back there?
Yeah, which were older than that.
Yes.
The pumps are older, they were installed, no, no, they were installed in ninety-two, new to us, but I believe they were manufactured like.
Nineteen forties almost, they're over forty years.
Yeah, they're, they're, like, they were manufactured ten years prior to us buying them, putting them in.
Lucky.
Correct.
So those pumps owe us nothing, and we can't go without pumps. Like Paula said, that is the most critical lift station in town. That's where all the sewage from the town of Madawar goes, before it goes to the uh, the booths.
So your recommendation, you're asking to purchase it this time?
That is correct. Alright.
I mean, any questions for, for Paul? We gotta move her, I need a second there for the motion.
Sorry, I, I do have a quick question. Thanks, Paul, okay, so I, I, are we, so we're buying two pumps from these guys? Like the, like the other pump, we, we already bought it, I believe?
Already, already been ordered, council approved that over a month ago, and now, and now it's.
Yeah, and and that was ninety-nine thousand?
Uh, it was, uh.
Just under a hundred.
Yeah, the I D S O uh, credit from hydro. And which we're gonna get, I don't know how much it is, but we're gonna get, for Aqua on our behalf, we'll submit to hydro. A four credit rebate for energy reduction, because these are efficiency pumps, so.
Okay.
We get old nineties, uh, I A D somewhere, also, and then after the credit.
Okay, great, thank you, I was, I was just gonna maybe, maybe consider, because like, if we're buying two pumps within six months, maybe they would even give us a more of a deal. I understand, like, the whole renting fee thing, which is great, but uh, you know, we're, we're almost a two hundred thousand dollars with, with them as well, but. Maybe something to think about. Thank you.
Yeah, fair statement, and just that, meaning what they're forgiving, uh, we ran the first bus, we ran two months. Before we ordered it, and then two months at every day, so four months at eighty-five hundred, so that's like. This one will be two or three months. Three times eight, twenty-four thousand, so we'll be close to sixty thousand dollars. We had credit with them, so I think that's hard to do better than that.
Any other questions?
How that recorded you?
So I have a motion moved by Councilor Levite, seconded by Councilor Tiber. Being resolved that council of the town of Madawar receives report number twenty-five dash eighty-one R title. This is street pump station update number two. And further that, council approves the purchase of a new sixty-six horsepower pump from Xylem. At a total cost of ninety-two thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars for the this street pump station. Uh, recorded vote requested by Councilor Levite, final chance for question and comments. None?
Yes.
Yes.
Council Gardner?
Yes.
Council Ross? Council Mick?
Yes.
Council Begelow?
Yes.
Mick LaHendri?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously.
Moving right along, uh, number ten bylaws. Uh, ten point one, that's a bylaw number twenty-five dash seventeen. Encroachment agreement with two fifty bank street, uh, being a bylaw to enter into an encroachment agreement with the property located at. Two fifty bank street, uh, this was discussed last meeting and uh. Council was aware that we're sending it back this evening for adoption, so I need a mover in the second there, please. Moved by Council Mick, seconded by Councilor Ross. Being resolved that council of the corporation of the town of Madawar adopt by law. Twenty-five dash seventeen being a bylaw to enter into an encroachment agreement with the property located at two fifty bank street. Questions, comments? Okay, I'm gonna call for a vote, uh, Council Begelow?
Yes.
Okay, and all in favor? Carry. Ten point two, uh, bu- bylaw number twenty-five dash eighteen. Committee of Adjustment Mentors for twenty twenty-six. Being a bylaw to appoint members of Committee of Adjustment for the year twenty twenty-six. Again, last meeting, uh, council, uh, want to uh, appoint the counselors. Gardner, Levite, and Begelow to uh, to be appointed to the Committee of Adjustment. And this is the formal bylaw back to, to be adopted, I need a mover in a second there. Moved by Councilor Levite, seconded by Councilor Ross, being resolved that. Council of the Corporation of Town of Madawar dot bylaw twenty-five dash eighteen. Being a bylaw to appoint members to the Committee of Adjustment for the year twenty twenty-six. Questions, comments? Call for a vote, Council Begelow?
Yes.
And all in favor? Carry. Ten point three, bylaw number twenty-five dash nineteen. It's amendment to parking bylaw zero seven seventeen. Being a bylaw to amend the town of Madawar consolidated parking bylaw number oh seven dash seventeen as amended. Uh, presentation was just given by. Mister Shatue, so this is what uh, we're gonna be uh, bringing forward for approval, I need a mover and a second there. Moved by Council Gardner, seconded by Council Mick. Being resolved that council of the corporation of the town of Madawar adopt by law twenty-five dash nineteen. Being a bylaw to amend the town of Madawar consolidated parking by law number oh seven dash seventeen as amended. Question, comments? Council Tiber?
Um. While we're at it, I know we have to pay for the school, the signs and that. And while we're at it, is there a chance we can get those school zone signs for Pine Street, or they, they've been dealt with yet?
This, this is a totally different topic.
No, I know, but it, we still have to pay for the signs, and if we're paying for the signs. It might be a little cheaper to get the one for Pine Street at the same time, that's what I'm saying.
So we've installed one on Pine Street, uh, we, we don't, we haven't declared that we have school zones in our community. So we install the school zone sign, now we have to create the, the school, the actual school zones, and then we have more signs to add, so. But we didn't solve one sign on which.
Never seen.
Go from the bottom up, and just.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll call for a vote, Council Begelow?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and all in favor? Carry. Ten point four, bylaw number twenty-five dash twenty, amendment to clean by yards, uh. Bylaw number twenty-one dash twelve, being a bylaw to amend by law number twenty-one dash twelve as amended. Which is a bylaw to provide for the maintenance of land in a clean and clear condition. All the cleans yards by law within the town of Madawar, we just got the presentation from uh, from Mister Shatue. A question, Council Gardner, you wanna move it? Do you want a second now? Moved by Council Gardner, seconded by Councilor Tiber. Being resolved that council of the corporation of the town of Madawar adopt by law twenty-five dash twenty. Being a bylaw to amend by law number twenty-one dash twelve as amended. Being a bylaw to provide for the maintenance of land in a clean and clear condition, clean yards by law, within the town of Madawar. Questions, comments? None, uh, call for a vote, Council Begelow?
Yes, thank you.
All in favor? Carry. Ten point five. Bylaw number twenty-five dash twenty-one, amend no smoking and or vaping of tobacco and cannabis in public places. And workplaces by law number twenty-two dash twenty-two. Being a bylaw to amend by law number twenty-two dash twenty-two, being a bylaw to regulate smoking. And or vaping of tobacco and cannabis in public places and workplaces in the town of Madawar. Which we just got a presentation from Mister Shatue. Well, I need a mover in a second there. Moved by Councilor Ross, seconded by Councilor Levite. Being resolved that council of the corporation of the town of Madawar adopt by law twenty-five dash twenty-one. Being a bylaw to amend by law number twenty-two dash twenty-two. Being a bylaw to regulate smoking and or vaping of tobacco and cannabis in public places and workplaces in the town of Madawar. Questions, comments? None, I will call for a vote, Council Begelow?
Yes.
And all in favor? Carry. Ten point six, being a bylaw, uh, sorry, bylaw number twenty-five dash twenty-two. Town of Madawar twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty strategic plans. Being a bylaw to adopt the town of Madawar twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty strategic plan. Okay, we had uh, public presentation of our plan at the last meeting. Uh, some comments were forwarded, and uh. We take those comments seriously, and those comments will all be looked at when we do the uh.
Year one operation.
The year one operational uh, plan. And uh, we will uh, incorporate it, incorporate as required in, in our yearly plans. Uh, so I, I need a mover in a second there. Well, uh, did, uh, sorry, moved by Councilor Levite, seconded by Councilor Tiber. Being resolved that council of the corporation of town of Madawar adopt by law twenty-five dash twenty-two. Being a bylaw to adopt the town of Madawar twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty strategic plan, questions, comments? Then I will call for a vote, the Council Begelow?
Yes, thank you.
All in favor? Carry. Okay. Old Business, number eleven, so eleven point one, Business. Flash Organization signage policy, anything to report on?
Uh, just that, uh, I have now, uh, received the draft policy. And I'm going through it, and I will have a report of next.
Thank you, any questions, your councils? None? Okay, eleven point two, the non-correspondence con- consultation on natural gas expansion in Ontario.
Yeah, so I uh, I've reached out to uh, Grand Church. And uh, I'm made aware that I wanted to have a session with them to inform them on what our plans are. I've not heard back, but uh, I'm assuming it's in the, in bridge. I have a space somewhere, my, my email to them, and I look forward to hearing back, when I do, I want us.
Questions about it? None, eleven point three, twenty twenty-six tax rebate for vacant lots. Nothing to report on?
I do not.
Questions? Eleven point four, commercial recycling, commercial tax rate adjustment. Think we talked about the recycling, but. Where's the? Is there anything to report on it at this time, or?
Not really, you, you've heard the update from uh. Uh, Director Sarazin, and uh. I am not. Seeing any tax rate adjustment at this time.
Okay, because I see it's commercial recycling that was talked about.
Yeah.
But com- commercial tax rate adjustment.
I wasn't sure if that was related to the commercial recycling, I thought it was.
Council Gardner?
Yeah, so what I'm gathering is that. Staff are recommending that there is no change to the commercial tax rate, based on the recycling and that the. Uh, the commercial, uh, the commercial businesses will be responsible for the. Um, the recycling costs, and they'll continue to pay their, their same tax rate, um, I think it's just. Before we get to that time, it's at this table, if that's what we want to do or not. Um, but it, it sounds like that's kind of what the recommendation is.
Okay, and uh. Council Ross?
So, do we charge extra for commercials for pickup for recycling?
As of January first? Nothing.
Okay, so then that will be debated back to them?
Well, they'll be responsible for the cost on their end.
On their, okay, I'm just saying, if, if we're not gonna be doing it, and if they're responsible for their own cost, would we? Would we not be reducing some of their tax rate in that case?
So, so if you're asking me, the only thing that I would say is if you're reducing the commercial tax rate, another. Then the group has to take up the, or you, or you reduce the spending, right, like? So if you're reducing the rate here for commercial, other residential, or. Um, one of the other tax rates, like, one of those could better up, but that's, that's a finance question.
Because I, I'm just wondering, like, if they, they, within the tax rate, if that. They were charged a certain amount in the tax rate and getting garbage pickup was included in that, and now it's not going to be. I don't know.
Recycling, okay, recycling.
Oh, recyc- okay, sorry, recycling, okay, sorry.
Okay, that's very well.
She just covered.
The councillor Tiber?
Um, I don't think we were ever responsible for, uh, for, uh, commercial recycling. Never, ever, ever. It was always the, the contractor and the. Or if I'm wrong, contractor and the, um, business, businesses.
Okay.
It's, it's a mixed bag, uh, concerned that. There are several businesses that had a contract with a private contractor. And from January one, those businesses could carry those arrangements, we're, we're out of it. To be frank, along the natural route of picking up personal recycling. See if a business happened to put their recycling at the sidewalk. It got picked up with the personal stuff. Should never have happened, but it did. But that, but that ceases going forward, as, as is the case in the whole province of Ontario. Uh, the province is taking over recycling for residential properties. Commercial properties have to have their own arrangement, either by themselves or through a third party. A private contractor to pick it up for them.
That's what I'm interested. Just that, uh. What also got locked in there was, so the contractor would take all the recycling to the processing facility. Whether it was residential or commercial and then the town paid that bill. Right, so, so that was, that's the part that they're now seeing. Okay, they had arrangements to pick it up before, but now the contractor is gonna charge them a processing fee, which they had to pay. And I look at like the Tim Orland's Wilson's Home Hardware, like the bigger.
Bigger.
Recycling generators. Um, uh, even, even the hospital, right, so the, the nursing home is residential, but the hospital is a merchant. They generate lots of recycling, so they're now paying the process.
What's your move?
Um, I'm just gonna add like, I. On one hand, I do recognize that taxes in general in Madaway and the business taxes is are like on the higher end of things, so. That might be a conversation to have, but I think in this conversation. I wouldn't feel comfortable playing with tax rates without looking at our full tax sort of. Spectrum, right, you know, and if we are making up for reducing something with something else, I'd like to have that fuller conversation and not just do it. As a one-off because of, um, recycling being downloaded onto the businesses. Um, but then on the other hand as well too, I think it's important to point out that. This downloading of costs onto businesses isn't coming from us either. And if businesses want to make a stink, they should make a stink to the top, right? You know, like this is another example of provincial downloading onto municipalities, which is then moving down onto businesses. Where we don't have much money to give rebates with either, right? You know, so get involved, send a letter to your MPP, you know, this is not. This is kind of our hands are tied as well, so, um. I guess to sum it up, on one hand, yes, let's have a conversation about our broader tax rates. Um, hopefully sooner than later, but on the other hand, you know. This is not us putting these.
Yeah.
Taxes onto the businesses, right?
Councillor Gardner?
Yeah, so that's why it's on old business, it was kind of meant to come back when we talk about it all. Um, the argument for that other people have to pick it up. Uh, I don't necessarily agree with because there should be cost savings to the town. Um, whether. The contract was meant to pick up res- commercial or residential. Um, is kind of. Doesn't really matter because. The contractor was doing it, the contractor wasn't doing it for free, the contractor knew what he had to pick up. He was billing the town accordingly or putting in his bid and, and the town was paying accordingly for that. And then they were also paying for the processing fees on the other end. So in some way, shape or form, the town was paying for commercial recycling. Um, without knowing what that number is, so the, what I, all I'm saying is that I don't want to. Dump just a number out of nowhere, I'm saying let's find out, let's get as close as we can to find out what that number is. And figure out what we can reduce, just the commercial based on that number, it might only be like a, a fraction of a, of a percentage, but. It's just, I think it's fair, it's if we're not spending it, why are we collecting it? And we've been collecting it in order to get the recycling done, but now we're not. Um, and, and it is a big cost, like I, I think that we've seen how businesses are struggling in our community. And, um, it's not cheap, uh, I, I've started to see some of the bills. And, uh, there, it's not cheap to have recycling picked up at your business. Um, so that, that was kind of more my concern was trying to figure out what that number was before. We were paying for all residential, the contractor was picking up commercial, recycling it, we were paying for the processing, so in a way we were paying for. Whether we were supposed to be or not, it was happening for years and years and years, so. Um, I, I just don't know if it's. Fair for us to keep collecting the same amount of money, but the customer gets less service. It's like if we charge a hundred dollars at the arena for an hour of rental and now we're gonna say, we're not gonna Zamboni the Ice, but we're still gonna charge you an hour while you're getting less service for your money. So that's kind of the argument here. But I agree, not to be decided like, uh, I was like, I think it needs to come with the whole tax rates and everything all together, but I want it to kind of be kept in mind while we're discussing those rates.
Okay, would, would it be fair that, uh, eleven point three and eleven point four? But both of them, when, when we're at budget time and I'm talking to staff and more specifically the treasurer. Come in with a more detailed, uh, report. On what those numbers are, cause you're, you're hearing all kinds of, uh, different, uh, ideas here at the table. Uh, I think everyone is clear now on the commercial recycling, what, what it entails and that. You know, January one, the cutoff date. Let's go a step further now and get into the, uh, the finances of it. Yes.
I'm okay if we want to remove it off of old business, so it's not every single meeting until this happens, but. Uh, as long as we're aware that I'd like to have the conversation when it does come back.
So, and that's up to the table, that's up to you guys what you want.
I agree. Let's get her done and see what happens and what the outlook is.
So are we okay to entrust staff to bring us, uh, more detailed report, financial end of it? And then we can remove those two, those two items from old business, cause.
We're just gonna keep doing this.
We've been doing this for five months now. Is that fair enough, Paul?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Uh, eleven point five, streetlights on Mackenzie Street?
Yep, that's me. So I, I'd like to remove this for now, because I need to speak to somebody to explain the, um, assessment we had done. I don't understand all the particulars, so I'd like to sit down with somebody and have that explained to see how things can be corrected. And then bring it back at a different time in the form of the report. If that's okay.
Come on, take my, G can come in, uh. Explain their, uh.
Yep.
Or I can, I can, so I, I understand the report, so.
Okay, so.
Good.
Can we, can we bring this in a report for a future meeting?
Well, I, I can just sit and find out what.
Well, I'd like to hear it too.
Well, you want to hear it too, okay, by all means then.
We might not, if you don't know what it is, right?
Okay.
So, so there, so we got three of them dealt with. And eleven point six, community safety and wellbeing in Madaway, that was, uh. Presentation from last meeting, it has to be put on old business, uh, you know, so again, we don't forget about it. Uh, did you want to comment further? Uh, councillor Mick and councillor Bigelow?
No, I, I was just gonna ask to have it on to old business, uh, just one more time, and then I was just gonna ask, um, the, the director for any, uh, comments that he would have on, on the matter as well.
Yeah, um, sure, uh, happy to give you a comment. Me, uh, community safety wellbeing plan. Uh, that I just so happened to be on the council that approved the plan. Um, actually I didn't take it up, but Amy dug it up for me. And, uh, it's weak at best. Uh, it was definitely a plan that was done. Uh, by an individual who felt like this was a good place to start. Uh, the whole purpose of the, of the community safety wellbeing plan was to hand it over to a community group for it to grow. And it just stopped, you know, because the plan was developed. Um, so there, there is a file there, it should, should be active and, uh. Uh, maybe speaking out of turn, but we're filling the public work supervisor role as soon as possible and. And, uh, this will be an item on my plate, so. Uh, I'll, I'll be working with local stakeholders, the plan is, uh, to be supported by the director and, and then, uh. We'll see what kind of lives that takes over the next fall.
Sounds great, thank you.
Just, I know that the, uh, police services board is, uh, wanting to, um, be active in community, uh, safety and wellbeing. And some of the other boards in the area too, and that is a hot topic right now, so they're probably gonna be looking at that as well.
Hospital was another one that I had heard, uh, looking for direction on how they support it.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh.
Maybe some collaboration.
Yeah, I would imagine the health unit would love to be involved.
Councillor Mick? Nothing?
Okay, yeah, if, if, if it's okay just to be put on the old business, like just one more time and then, and then, yeah, we, we can, we can go from there. And thanks for your comments, uh, director, thank you.
Okay, no new business? Questions from the public pertaining to the agenda, none? Then we are going in camera, so I need a mover in the second there. So moved by councillor Rick. The seconded by councillor Ross. Being resolved that council proceed in camera, post-session pursuant to section two thirty-nine dash two. Of the municipal act two thousand and one, as amended at seven twenty-one P M. In order to address the following. Uh, three different items, item fourteen point two, it's Madaway landfill site update, lit- litigation. Or potential litigation including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local boards. Item fourteen three, Rosemount Valley Suites update and item. Fourteen point five, business opportunity update, a proposal pending acquisition or disposition of land by municipality or local board. And item fourteen point four, Madaway Fitness Center and Voyager Curling Club information explicitly supplied in confidence. To the municipality or local board by Canada, a province or territory, or a crown agency of any of them. Question, comment?
Yep.
All in favor? Uh.
Yes. Thank you.
All in favor? Carrie? Motion, uh, moved by councillor Tiber, seconded by councillor Mick. Being resolved that the regular meeting reconvene at eight thirty P M. Questions, comments? None, all in favor? Carrie? So we went into a closed meeting, uh, to discuss a few items. Uh, one of the items was, uh, an update on the, uh, landfill site. A resolution was passed. In camera to give directives to staff. Uh, the other item was, uh, concerning Rosemount Valley Suites update. A resolution was passed for directives to staff. Uh, the, uh, Madaway Fitness Center and Voyager Curling Club announcing, uh, it is public knowledge now, so, uh. Uh. Our M P D, uh, Fidelli made the announcement earlier today that we were successful in receiving a N O H C grant to, uh, refurbish the, uh. The Curling Club building, the tune of, uh, five hundred plus thousand. So that's, uh, welcome to the community. And the final one was, uh, to discuss a business opportunity update. Uh, at five ninety-eight Tunnel Street and, uh, resolution for directives was given to staff. So, now we've done that, I think that brings it to the end, need a mover in the second there. Well, the, uh, it was, motion is moved by councillor Gardner, seconded by councillor Mick. Being resolved that this regular meeting adjourned at eight thirty-two P M. Question, comments, none, all in favor? Carrie?